As of 4:01 PM on October 1st, we'll call this work session of the Anchorage School District to order. I'll just do the roll call. We are lacking Member Wilson and Member Donnelly. Okay, and we've heard she's stuck in traffic. I'll be here shortly. And I can testify there is traffic out there to be stuck in. So, item B on our, thank you, agenda is board requests for information. I will pass it to the superintendent.
It appears that our current requests for information have been categorized and we have a queue of three. And at this point, if there are any other requests for information, we'll take those now.
Does anyone have other requests for information? Seeing no one's microphone light up. We will move to item C, the discussion on bond rights, bonds and right sizing. And once again, Superintendent Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we're going to begin with a conversation on the bond. This is a follow-up to the conversation we had at our last meeting. But the key point is I want the board to be assured that these conversations between the right sizing plan or in bond are not happening in isolation. They're very much interconnected. So Jim will walk us through a brief on the bond. And then we're going to transition into a right sizing brief that I'll also open when we get to that slide. So, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, good evening. Tonight will be, this will be the first time that you'll see the recommended bond package for this year. We know that bond and CIP are inextricably linked together. We also know that because of right sizing, planning that will happen over the next several months and decisions in December. That years two through six, certainly when you see this CIP this next month could change significantly depending on what happens on decisions in December. But on tonight, we'll focus on the bonds. And then just a reminder to the board, we have one-on-one bond briefing scheduled with each of the board members between the 10th and 15th of October. So it'll be followed by Larry.
All right.
You got to get a closer to now.
Okay. I wanted to start off with a little bit from last meeting, talking about how we had kind of overstretched some of our consultants and our contractors. And so on here, I have a little bit of a list of a few projects that we've got in process right now. That's before we even get to the looking at new projects. We have a lot of roofing structural, which as you know, we have been concentrating on for the last few years. And we have safety and security, which everybody knows that's been high on a priority. Now, some of the stuff on here, the roof and structural, some of those projects are going to go out through 2027 and even possibly into 2028 before they're completely done. So, looking at the safety and security. We have some new SVUs coming up this next year. Some access control, and then we have access control at three sites. That's being handled actually through a grant program.
Can I ask you to get closer to your microphone? Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. Hope this is better. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to briefly talk on safety and security. Again, my name's Tom Fennessey, Senior Director, Capital Plan and Construction. It's important because safety and security, um, recent bond initiatives has been an important aspect of that. Twenty percent of the, of this year's bond is going towards safety and security upgrades. That includes our secure vestibule program that has been going on since 2019. And so far, we've completed forty-five secure vestibule projects with three more projects in elementary schools to be completed by 2025. So Larry's going to talk a little bit about the project highlights.
Yes. This is a little different than you saw last year. Here I actually broke these out per the types of projects they are. We have safety and security. We have our secure vestibule group six, just another one that we have. Every year we try to do a group of them. We're almost done with elementaries. Intrusion system replacements, I'm going to talk a little more on that coming up. This is a fairly important one that has a bit of time sensitivity to it. And access control. Then we get into major renovations. We have our Bartlett plan that you approved last, earlier this year. As well as some renovations at Spring Hill and at Campbell Elementary's. And some major infrastructure replacements. We have a utilitor under West High School that we've had two phases replacing a lot of very old and abandoned piping and electrical systems. And then of course, planning and design for future projects so that we can get a good idea of the building conditions as we're putting together a plan for the future. And back to Tom.
So the secure vestibules, again, this has been going on since 2019. It's a focus of what we do because we want to make sure that our, our students and staff are, are safe. The secure vestibule concept involves crime prevention through environmental design. This is in collaboration with the Anchorage Police Department, the FBI and Department of Homeland Security. And it incorporates about a dozen systems to make sure that we restrict and control access to the schools. We increase surveillance and accountability to identify threats and also improve communications in a security incident. In addition to that, we have the intrusion detection system, which Larry will talk about.
Yes. This one here, if we call it intrusion systems, a lot of people would call it burglar alarms. It's basically securing the perimeter or in a building when nobody's there. It gets armed when the last person leaves and disarms when a person comes in. Now, these schools have what is the old facility commander system that was our standard for a long time. However, it's become obsolete and IT has done an incredible job trying to get it to go through the next few years, but they have finally told us that October 26th, this becomes completely obsolete and not supportable. And so these are the schools and facilities that are still yet to have theirs replaced. That's why I say there is a bit of a time certainty on this one. And if we go to the next one, access control. Part of all that forty-something schools that have had secure vestibules, well, the first fifteen of them did not have access control. Basically, the little key fob that allows you to get in. This also allows for us to not need to issue new exterior keys for staff. Now they have a fob that if they lose it, call it in, we just take it out of the system and not have to rekey an entire building for it. So these are the ones here that it's, now that we're getting towards the end of the elementary, uh, secure vestibules. Now we're going to come back and pick up the access control for those remaining buildings that did not have them in the beginning. Bartlett High School, again, we went through the process of developing a master plan for it that was a very good one, I would say. And also, this is the first stage of it. What it's going to do is take care of some of the infrastructure and do some building-wide improvements that as we go forward and have to do phasing, it'll make phasing a whole lot easier. As had been mentioned during the master plan, we have three separate electrical services in the building. This will bring them all together into one that will make it a whole lot easier to do a lot of the, instead of having to figure out what areas on what service, we can take care of this all at once. There are other places like on some HVAC system, heating, ventilation and air conditioning systems that we can take care of that will also make transitioning from phases a whole lot easier. At the same time, this will also complete the design up through a hundred percent. Spring Hill.
Sorry, before we jump too far ahead, I, I have a question on the intrusion system replacement. How much does approximately does it cost to rekey a school? Because my understanding is from my own personal experience at work, when you lose one key within that system, the, the whole thing have, all of the doors have to be replaced, the keys have to be replaced. So I'm just curious as to see what estimated cost? Okay, thank you.
I, I would add in, my experience is it doesn't always happen. The keys have been lost.
And it doesn't always get replaced.
Yeah, I, I realize it may not be policy. I don't mean to, to, to cast aspersions on anyone. But yeah, I know the keys have been lost and people haven't been charged. And locks haven't been changed. But I think at some point, people get worried to the point that they do. And it is an expensive process, as well as the fact that our old-style locks are subject to vandalism. Super glue.
Case. Onto Spring Hill. Uh, Spring Hill Elementary, uh, we had some leaks there and which the board approved to redo the roof there. And we have also have been in design. We also had a secure vestibule project in there. Now this is, has taken and we will be back to talk about the items that we will take care of. There's some finishes that need to be redone, heating, ventilation and air conditioning. There's also thermal upgrades, uh, energy efficiencies and many other things that it's just time, it's an old building, it's time to upgrade it. Campbell, a nice old building, but it has good bones right now. They're doing a, a new roof and some roof structural upgrades on the building. This project will do some additional structural. It will, this is one school that has not had a secure vestibule, which part of our policy is that when we can do it as part of a renovation, it's a lot more efficient and easier to get done. We also have a new intercom system to go in there, some mechanical, electrical, and we will be taking a look at it for improving educational adequacy. And next, West High School Utilitor. This is basically the mechanical basement of a building. Little tunnels that go all over the building, which is where water, sewer, heat, electrical conduits, they all run in there. Well, over the years, as some things have worn out, they've run new piping, conduits, whatever, and just abandoned in place the old stuff. And in fact, there are places you cannot even walk through them because of a lot of the old abandon. And now what this is going to do, this is the final in phase. Take all of those remaining utilitors, eliminate everything that's abandoned, replace things that are old, and it will basically be what it was originally intended to be. A nice service space for people to get in and do work on any time of the day to be able to not have to interrupt school. This is a very efficient way of getting utilities through a building, especially a larger building.
So just a quick reminder, I know we had at least one board member walk in after we started. We do have one-on-ones for the bond scheduled 10 through 15 October. If you haven't been scheduled, I'm sure that will be done pretty quickly. And we'll go through each of these projects with as much detail as you'd like. And if you have questions prior to that, please feel free to send them to me and we'll make sure that we're prepared properly to not waste your time. So next, I would like to go to the snow removal equipment bond. I think that the school board, many of the school board members, well, actually, most of you have been here for quite a while. So you're aware that we have had a lifecycle equipment replacement plan for computers. We have rotated and every couple of years replaced buses. We have replaced white fleet vehicles for a number of years as we looked at our, our budget shortfalls. The one thing that we really didn't have a lifecycle equipment replacement plan was for snow removal equipment. Not surprisingly, Snowmageddon and Snowpocalypse or whatever the last two winters have been really brought to light that, that much of our fleet's very, very, very old. And although this bond won't replace everything, it's not designed to do that. It will certainly give Rob and his team what they need to do the mission. You'll also see a different board memo on tonight's straight to action. That is not associated with the snow bond. So if there's any confusion, that's a separate and distinct issue. Rob found some equipment that's physically available to procure now. We had the funding and the equipment replacement fund. The assembly passed a, a thing last week, last Monday night for the city to procure pretty much the exact same pieces of equipment. So that's why it went direct to action. So our procurement section can get moving very quickly. But I didn't want that to be confused with the bond. So I wanted to state that. So I'll hand this over to Rob.
And I'll, I'll note that Member Donnelly and Member Wilson have been with us for a while now. And Member Watson has a question.
Thank you. Can you clarify that the assembly is trying to, are we going to be trying to procure the exact same pieces of equipment that the assembly is trying to procure or the same models, but enough for the district and enough for the muni?
I think both the municipality and the school district are aware that there are limited pieces of equipment available for procurement, or we would not have gone direct to action.
Please continue. Or take a break and go get this equipment and then come back and tell us about it.
Well, to your point, Member Hallen, there it is on the screen. I just need to go get it. So thank you for your time and consideration of this. You'll see fourteen pieces of heavy equipment and ten smaller pieces. This is a line change, to use a hockey analogy of our equipment that's anywhere from on average fifteen to twenty years old. And a couple of very quick examples of that, uh, last year. Excuse me, we had, we have a fleet of five dump trucks, the size is fourteen yard. At no time during the winter was more than one of those operation at any given time for various reasons. We use those to actually haul snow when the piles get big enough and it, we need to get it out of the way as we pile it up at schools. That's what we haul it with. We load it with loaders into those dump trucks and haul it off. And then another very profound example occurred this spring when it was time to sweep the parking lots of all of the, I see a couple of members nodding there, all of the gravel that occurs, that piles up when we put aggregate, aggregate on the snow and ice to keep, keep it safe for traction, right? So we need to sweep that up and remove it become, because it becomes loose and dangerous on that asphalt. And both of the two sweepers that we own were broken down in catastrophic failure. They were categorized and we could not use them at all until we were able to stand up a sweeping contract much later in the summer when contractors were available that were not otherwise engaged during, during the post-breakup era when they're all strained. So that, that's a couple of kind of extreme examples. The more, the heavy, the heavier winter, of course, puts a bigger strain on equipment. So that's what you see here is the pieces of equipment net what we're buying right now from IRF funds. Just so you know, we're also buying, we're currently writing the spec to purchase another new loader. And it's going to give us a unique advantage. It's going to have a very large snow blower attached to the loader. We don't own any of those. You see them on like highway crews. That was, that's going to give us the ability to actually throw snow a long distance where we currently push it with loaders right now. So we can manage those piles by not creating them and have to move them. So that's a way to not only replace this fleet, but in replacing it, modernize it. So now we don't have to have all that redundant labor and trying to catch up and let, now let's go haul off the piles because they're in the way and they're creating giant berms. We're just going to blow the stuff seventy to ninety feet with this piece of, of equipment. And if that works really well, like we believe it will, uh, we can buy one or more of these attachments later for the other new loaders we're buying. At the bottom of the list, you'll note the ten tractors there. That's to support the, the smaller tractors. People kind of generically say John Deere tractors, though that's not the only brand. This will support an aging fleet of, of tractors at high school and middle schools that have much larger facilities and parking lots. And so the BPOs of those schools use this equipment and, and will, will harvest back some of the ones we're replacing that are in their best shape. And our equipment repair shop, we use those in reserves so we can actually provide loan, one-to-one loaners when a piece of equipment is down. We have not had that luxury the last few years. So that would increase efficiency at the school. That's what I have for the slide.
Member Bellamy has a question.
Just a question on, each school has some snow removal equipment, right? What, what, what is that? I mean, it's not going to measure up to this, but it, site-wise.
Well, it helps a lot for scale, yes. So I, uh, secondary schools have, um, most people call them the green or the John Deere tractor. So they have a, like a yard-sized tractor with a typically a cab and a plow or a blower, typically a, a snow blower. That has increased capacity over a walk behind.
Right, okay.
All of our elementary schools have All of our elementary schools have, um, a commercial sized walk behind self-propelled snow blower. Uh, a few elementary schools have one of these tractors that has been purchased by the PTA of that school or a similar organization. And when we get those, uh, they ask us for our spec, so we make sure we can support it. And we provide our specs so they buy the right one.
So the schools don't need, we don't need to replace equipment at the schools for, it makes, at each school? Or is that a, a whole different process?
Well, it, it's related to this. It's a, it's a great question. So this last summer, we did buy 11 of the brand new commercial walk behinds I talked about. And that's for fleet readiness. So we are addressing that. Those 11 are, are replacing some that are aging out and becoming obsolete. We, we have a mechanic that keeps great track of that using spreadsheets. Uh, and with obsolescence, he replaces those. And then this also builds back his reserve, his loner fleet. He drives around with a trailer and when one is down, he'll replace it with a loner, one for one and, and keep the activity going.
All right, great. I'm, I'm just, I was just curious if we were replacing top as well as the site.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Member Jacobs and Member Higgins.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I think we mentioned a fun source earlier and I didn't quite catch it. Did we say IRF?
Yeah.
And what is that?
Yeah. So, uh, just rounding, we have, we have about, uh, a million dollars, just over a million dollars of IRF funds, which, which we're using currently for a couple of projects. The main one being that the three dump trucks we just purchased, a PR has been cut. And then we're going to be buying a, a loader. Generically it's called a 966 size. It's a, it's a monster. And it's, we're going to buy one of these, uh, large highway size snow blowers for it. That's net of this slide. So what that, those IRF purchases plus the slide represent a line change of all of our heavy equipment. So we'll have complete fleet readiness.
So Member Jacobs, the IRF is the Equipment Replacement Fund. And so as you buy equipment, you pay into that fund as it depreciates out. And so for a few years, a few years back, um, about the time I took over as CFO, um, they, they had spent a couple of years where they didn't buy a lot out of the IRF. So it draws down during those times and we've been building up and building up. So um, about half every year for the last many years has gone to IT hardware. Equipment replacement fund is anything over $5,000. So it, it really, you just depreciate it out over 10 years and that's what helps build up, um, the fund.
I follow up, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you. Um, not a true follow-up, I guess, a different, different thread. Are we, uh, this came up at the, the joint session too. Um, i- is there going to be any synergy between municipal? Um, or do we know yet if there's going to be a synergy between municipal snow plowing operation? Um, and the district effort, is there going to be, are we going to be asked for, to help out more than we have in the past?
No, not, I mean, are we working better with the muni right now than we were the last couple of years? Yes. We've already met at the highest levels, all the way down, have had multiple meetings. Uh, but the reality is they focus on, um, a different area of the city than we do. We clear grounds and we clear sidewalks, um, really don't have the capacity to do more. And as they've demonstrated, they really don't have the capacity to do more for us as either.
One last, if I might, Mr. Trivia, I just, I, I watched your briefing to the assembly and I think the stat regarding how much roof space we have to clear, um, brought some added context to the conversation to something that the, um, muni, I didn't, didn't seem generally aware of. So appreciate that. Thanks.
Member Higgins?
It, it, will this be a separate bond from the other bond? Is that the intent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the, the next one, the size of the bond, uh, is there some linkage there that we're trying to keep below or some type of, of amount? Uh, what's the purpose there?
Well, knowing that in the last, I don't know, eight out of 10 bonds, there's always been some modifications to them. So we did keep this one to just below, um, last year's bond. And we think that, that the challenge for us now isn't, could we add more? We could add more projects. The problem is the workforce isn't there to do the work. So we really looked at like backlog for SVUs this summer. Um, we, we, as it turns out, because of the labor force being what it is, uh, and we were well into the school year still finishing up the last three secure vestibules. So we're trying to put the projects and time them out with where we think the capacity of the local market is to meet our requirements. So it wouldn't do any good. Um, the first, the first slide, Larry Brief talked about all the different roof projects we have. It wouldn't do any good to add 10 more roof projects. There's no one to do the work. So we're really trying to look at each different type of construction area and what the capacity is to, to meet those and tailor the bond toward that.
Do we have any option? I mean, I saw a bucket, I went there, I saw the buckets and everything else with it. It's, it's awful. Uh, I went to other schools. I see the buckets again with leaks everywhere it seems like the schools. And I'm trying to say, is there some type of options we have to really seal on top completely to at least prevent that from continuing while we're fighting this? Do we have some other options other than simply 100% roof replacement?
Well, as you know, we, we have used the, uh, spray sealant on roofs, Trimco, um, numerous times, but not every roof. It's, it's not appropriate for every type of roof. We have a lot of roof structures out there where that's really not an option. And if you see the one with the big pavers and all those, we really just need to get rid of the whole roof. You can't fix it. Um, for some of them, the, the, even the slant, slanted metal roofs, there were issues with the screws going in over time causing electrolysis and causing damages where again, Trimco would not be a solution. Uh, we have looked at everywhere where you can renew a roof, which is something like what they do and you get 30 years out of it. And we've used it for a lot of them. But we have roofs, some of the schools you've been into, they need major work and they can't just be spray sealed.
It was depressing to watch some of the, some of the temperature control, the, 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 the the roof problems and all. If anything, Bartlett needs it yesterday.
Yes.
Um, probably 20 years ago at this point, I can't tell. Uh, within, I'm also looking at options on maintaining the schools before it gets to that point. I, I appreciate your comments about West High School with tunnels underneath. Um, and I know that Stella has the same situation and they have copper pipes. Well, I got older house and it had copper in there and I replaced it all because it's, it's soft. And it's going to be a leak be, when you finally fix it and you nearly need to replace it now with the plastic changes. And so that's just an option. I'm, I'm looking for things out here that we could, um, uh, prevent the kind of disaster I think that's going to happen.
Yeah, I, I agree completely. When we do one-on-one, we'll come more prepared to talk about, are there any roofs left that could be extended instead of, but, but honestly, Andrew and his folks, they're on the roofs all the time, year round. There's, there's, there's only so much you can do with minor maintenance. It really, some of these need some love. And we've got, if you were to replace three roofs per year with 93 buildings, it would still take us 30 years, which would be the life expectancy if all of them started at the same like timeline, which they don't. And we're way behind on roofs, which is why you saw on that first slide for Larry. We have so many roof projects because we're so behind, but the capacity to do more just isn't there. And a, at some point, you, you, you end up competing against yourself and raising the cost because you're putting more projects than they can actually perform. And, and it's, so we're trying to balance that capacity of the local market versus our needs.
It's just difficult for me to imagine not patching a roof if you're scared you can't replace it.
Well, that's happening too.
I understand. I understand that. When I see the, when I see the buckets in different rooms and I know the kids are there with that and I know the, all the consequences of having that kind of moisture in the walls are there and the, and the damage and the health issues associated with it. It just, it seems like there's got to be some avenue that we can pursue. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, please proceed.
All right. Um, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and transition to our next presentation, which is on our right sizing project. So we'll be joined by, uh, Sven Gustafson, our Chief Academic Officer. Before I, we proceed, I do want to share a couple of things with board members because I know our time is li, very limited on this topic tonight. But one, we're almost ready to close our most recent survey and some of the information that you're going to see is based off of what we have to date. Um, with, if, which is quite a few responses. So that's number one. But, um, the most important thing I want board members to know is that today you're going to see for the first time a couple of slides, one of which will be the very first preview, um, and again, version one of the tool that we'll use to evaluate our facilities to identify those eligible or candidates for the right sizing plan. The second slide that you'll see during this presentation will be what we've been referring to as guardrails. We're going to shift the terminology to discussion points, just so there's no confusion with our, um, governing guardrails that we often refer to. Um, but essentially that's an opportunity for us to collect the data and we've observed a few uh, distinct themes that we'd like to directly address with a few recommendations head on. Um, but this is the first time that you're seeing, um, that information. So this would be a great time to collect your thoughts, feedbacks, reactions. But I also want to give you a couple of weeks to mull this over and to let us know if there are particular things that are critical to modify or to look at before we proceed. Because as I've mentioned before, and I want to mention it again, it's very important to me that I get board member feedback before we start naming any buildings. I really want to make sure that the tools that we're using, um, do seem appropriate to the board and we're willing to make those modifications over the next couple of weeks, but we're about to hit the next juncture, which would be actually identifying buildings. So I just want to put that timeline in, in mind. So Mr. Anderson will, uh, dive through the details.
Thank you again. These are ultimately what we look at trying to achieve, which is properly resource schools. And that's what right sizing is all about. We've already conducted four different briefings from April through, um, a, a couple of weeks back. And I, I think we've covered in general what right sizing is and what our goals are. Um, but again, as Dr. Bryant mentioned, tonight we'll start talking about how do you do it? And how do you look at the schools and what are you looking for to evaluate? And we'll go through those in just a bit. Um, so these are the right sizing discussion points. The, the last time I did use guardrails and I probably should have defined it better. Uh, because we all know that board guardrails take a year, but we have two weeks. And these really are just, what are the boundaries that you, that you just are not going to accept? And that's what we'll talk about. And there might even be more as, as you think about this over the next um, couple of weeks. There might be other areas that you say, you know, I want to give the planners some guidelines that I'm going to be willing to accept. Now, when we do that in a couple of weeks from now, um, I, I do want to point out that if one board member wants something completely different than every other board member, we, we need four votes or more. Um, and they can be thumbs up. They don't have to be official votes, but thumbs up for people or, or more, uh, making sure that we understand where do we operate in this space of right sizing? Uh, so here's the three that, that I came up. The first one was hold harmless. So two years ago, or just shy of two years ago, when Abbott Loop was, um, was voted in to close, um, there were people in the community that brought up, please don't ever have my school name brought up again. Um, this was very difficult, but we never actually addressed it or talked about whether, how the board felt about that. Well, two years on, frankly, many of the schools that were in bad shape are probably not in better shape. Many of the schools that were very small schools are probably not that much bigger. In fact, they're probably smaller. Um, so when you look at the recommendation over to the right, if we really are going to do a complete look at the district and look at everything from boundaries across the board to buildings, we do recommend that, that we do analyze all the schools that meet the criteria um, that you'll see in an upcoming slide. Because it, it, we, we could end up making some significant errors in judgment. Um, if we just disregard five schools off the top, that may very well fit multiple criteria later. The second one is special programs and it's not just the surveys, but it's people that come to the board room and, and do public testimony. Um, I think Andy and I have listened to budget testimony for nine years. Um, and everybody has their program that's, that's truly unique and the surveys absolutely showed that to be true. So the, the question, um, if you talk to any one individual, they would say that their program um, should never be considered for elimination. Uh, but as we start going through all of this, um, the, the reality from a planning perspective is we recommend, because the surveys and so much town hall feedback, um, talks about the value of special programs. We're talking Montessori and ABC and immersion and things like that. Um, we do recommend that at least initially, we retain these programs. Um, if it's feasible to, and, and if they were to be recommended to move, that we would consider relocating options before mass cancellation of special programs. Um, and then finally on current grade levels, at the very first or second brief last spring, I did talk about, we already have K8 programs, K12 programs. As we start looking at schools, um, I just wanted to, to again, get a thumbs up that we're going to be looking at multiple different options to include changing the grade levels at a particular school. And I just wanted to, to throw this out there. Um, and this one's more as something to, to get your brain moving on, what are those other ones that you would come up with that, um, that four or more board members may feel that those are the boundaries we shouldn't cross. And I don't know if you want to discuss this now. We certainly will in two weeks. But it's your time.
I'm going to ask if board members want to weigh in on any of these points in particular. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, these seem reasonable to me. And so I, I'm one vote in favor for utilizing these three, um, topics and recommendations. I guess I have two additional ones, or maybe just one additional one, that, um, administration would prioritize examining the intersection of using excess elementary capacity for the purpose of, um, cohabitating childcare in those facilities. And then two, um, examining if and when, uh, there's opportunities to utilize, um, a facility that's, um, its population will be consolidated into another facility for housing a charter optional program or something else, another existing ASD program. And so if those are already given, great. Um, if they aren't a given, then I guess I would ask that we add those to the list.
And did you want to respond to that or?
I, I actually think that's a great segue into the actual evaluation rubric, which I think directly touches upon points that Member Jacob brought up.
I think you'll see on the next few slides, you'll see we specifically addressed both of those with, um, a very intentional focus.
Member Higgins?
Yeah, I, um, uh, in, in regards to the hold harmless, if, if I'm, I'm going to be picking another school that has less, it, it, that is not a good, as good a choice to close compared to one before. That's not fair to anybody. And, and I'm not, I wouldn't want to have any sort of hold harmless because it just gives preference for a bad decision. And so I just don't see that as, as a viable type of, of situation. Special programs, uh, you're going to do, immersion programs are very intense. Um, in Montessori, most people are dropping these kids off. There's all kinds of options and there's other programs out there that are like that, that are, that are more optional. But some of these, uh, programs, you change the school, you're going to really make a huge difference. Uh, and immersion programs are clearly a good example. Uh, there's a lot of invested time. I wouldn't want to see that go. And that becomes an issue, but whether it could be done in another school and be transferred, I think everything's going to be on a situational kind of thing. It just, you've got to look at the evidence and what, what the options are. And we'll, I know we'll get lots of feedback on it, but within that.
Uh, Member Watsons?
I think that the, um, the three, um, recommendations here are sensible and realistic. I think one of the values that I would like to see, and maybe this is part of I think one of the values that I would like to see, and maybe this is part of the rubric. But how how can the the con the educational context, how does that promote student growth? I mean, I've talked about the importance of growth and there are so many factors into it, but I think that we have some school situations where growth is I don't know, the the educational setting may hinder student growth for various reasons. And perhaps we can create an optimal environment to to support student growth.
Any other members wish to weigh in? I would add mine. I think the the suggestions are good. The question about whether or not a school that was considered for consolidation before could be exempt has come up a number of times. I've explained to people, and I looked carefully, I never really looked at the rubric per se. But in looking at the schools we were considering, it was very clear that there were reasons that those schools could be consolidated that did the least damage to the least number of students. You know, we're that and and when you looked at it carefully, you looked at the map and everything, you could see that. And like you say, I suspect some of the same schools will surface again. Not anything about the quality of the school or the staff or the kids, but just about neighborhoods and where the groups attending that school are, where they would be moved to. The effort to minimize transportation as much as we can, et cetera, et cetera. I I thought the choices made before made a lot of sense. I would want to see that same logic applied as we look at it again. I do feel for people that that their school may come up a second time. I can understand why that is emotionally very difficult at at a personal level. But at the same time, in trying to create the best atmosphere for all of our students, kind of have to follow the math on it. And I I think what's been done so far made a lot of sense. Any other comments? If not, please continue.
Okay, I'll turn over to Stan.
So moving into just kind of giving you an update on where this the survey responses are coming in, like Dr. Brian said, the actual survey. I I think it closed at the end of the day last night. We haven't had the opportunity to analyze and whatnot yet. So we're going to we're going to give you kind of where we're at now. Forty three hundred and sixty two respondents. I think we have around a 500 more that we'll be analyzing. As we move forward, you'll get the final results on that in two weeks. So far, in in each of these two bar graphs, people can select more than one. So a parent could also be a staff member, a community member could also be a parent and what have you. So really looking parents and guardians were the highest group. ASD staff and then community, we're we're there. Then, when you look at the different levels, a big, a big chunk of the close to seventy percent of the respondents were through elementary schools and then middle and high were in the high thirties and forty. Kind of looking at what's come out from that survey over the this initial look. And by the way, the initial look of forty three hundred and sixty two, if we just add 500, the statistical analysis doesn't change too much when we do that money. However, we're going to make sure that every one of those surveys is counted before we solidify things. But so far, school programs has definitely been the top area that people want us to focus upon. Ninety four percent are in full are in favor of full range of classes at elementary level of eighty nine of the high schools, we've wanting to do diverse class offerings. Operational costs, it's a little bit lower, but pretty significant. Eighty one percent chose Scott cost per student as a really important thing that we need to be looking at, kind of moving down school size. Eighty nine percent want adequately sized spaces for their kids. Seventy two percent want more full time specialized teachers and staff, moving down a little further into the neighborhood environment. Eighty five percent valued effectively located schools and seventy eight percent are valuing the increasing number of students in neighborhoods, such as if we have a growth of specific neighborhoods or potential growth, that's something we should be looking at. Staffing seventy nine percent want secondary schools to have similar course offerings despite the size of their schools. We've heard that for for many years and seventy six percent want elementary schools with three classes per grade. That's kind of the area that we kind of have been talking about as well. And then building investments was probably the the lower end of our survey so far, prioritizing major major improvements and and kind of like support major improvements via bond funding and the budget. And we're really looking at in in that one as well as they don't, the surveys came back is they don't really want us to utilize whether or not we've done some renovations recently or planned renovations as part of our as part of a big part of the the rubric.
Member Wessons?
Yeah, I had a one quick question. I hope under operational costs and efficiencies. When we think about cost per student, you know, currently a small school will often have a higher cost per pupil. However, when when you factor in special ed funding, I think that also drives. I mean, is I guess a question is, is special education funding part of the cost per pupil? Because it seems to me, at least at this level, that so maybe that should be separate.
So I separated it when I calculated the cost per pupil per school. The reason I separated it is because we have regional programs where like SBBS, where you have one school with a lot of resources in it. And it it just skews everything out of perspective and it's no longer apples to apples when you're comparing schools to each other. So I have the total. I have the without sped and with sped. And and it's just to make sure that we're not taking an SBBS school and saying, oh, that school just costs too much per kid. Well, of course, it would.
I had also I skipped past but kind of answering member Jacob's question from earlier under operational costs and efficiencies, seventy percent of the respondents have agreed that it's important to use parts of or all of schools for childcare relocations and other district programs, such as charter schools.
So some of the the, as we started looking at, what were the components of the the rubric that we were going to use? And we tried to incorporate those as much as we could in the surveys. Some of it actually came from survey feedback that helped us better define some of these. But you can see as we go down, I won't read them all because I apparently made way too many slides for a thirty minute brief. I'll just cover a couple of them. And of course, we can talk anytime you'd like. So when you look at operational efficiency, we have put a lot of time and we'll spend the next week or so. So when you see the rubric, there's some blocks that are still empty. And we're trying to make sure that we can codify exactly how we're going to compare schools with a number. And so some of this is takes a little bit more effort than just making a matrix real fast. And for those of you who have done it, you have weighting criteria where some criteria just waits more than other criteria. Most of those are on Sven's side of the house where it's about the education level of service. And then you have this stuff on my side of the house that might wait less unless it ends up being busing that we just simply couldn't support. That might wait higher. But as you go through these, you'll see that you know, we we will have waiting criteria for a lot of these. And then you look at, this is our first draft rubric. And again, as Dr. Bryant said, this will come back in two weeks. It will be fluffed out a little bit more. But in each of those major components, those five areas will have different scoring elements. Each one will be weighted different. Each one will be scored different and we'll try to define those to where people who don't live in this business can understand what our definition means. And then we will go through and go through the rubric, look at schools. And then, of course, there's always those exigent things like Ursa Major where overnight we find out, you know, there's something new that wasn't in the FCI. If something like that happens, we'll deal with that in stride as we move through. But if there aren't any questions on this, this will change a little bit more. I'll probably have a handout for the board members to be able to see the definitions of these before the next briefing. And maybe put it in Board Connect the Friday before. So when you're looking at the rubric, you'll feel comfortable that it's not just a made up number on a dartboard that that we just got lucky and hit with a dart in the dark. So it's it is a good, solid way. I I I think it's a stronger justified way to do the evaluation than what we did two years ago. And I'm feeling pretty comfortable so far.
So as we move into this next slide, I want to focus on that horizontal arrow, which is the arrow that I'm mostly responsible for, and that is maintaining focus on student outcomes and strategy twenty twenty eight. As we are, as we continue to move through this process, my job is to make sure we are focusing on making sure all of our kids are getting what they need is levels of service. That's why that arrow is a little bit bigger than the others right now, because that's something that we do need to keep our eye on as we move forward. And then if we were to choose to do different things, that's where we start looking at what do we need to do for our kids in these schools to be able to make sure that they are successful with whatever decisions we make.
So I'll talk through the rest real briefly. If you look at the the evaluation rubric really will drive these decisions and recommendations from our perspective, recommendations to the board. And we will look, if you look at the top, there there certainly is the closing repurpose. You look at repurposing it a number of ways, things that member Jacobs have brought up as well as combining programs. I mean, we have act in multiple locations. We have other efficiencies we can gain with district programs by consolidating. We had talked about it. Pre-K Center of Excellence a couple of years ago. I mean, there's a lot of different things you can do to repurpose a school that's got good bones and is worth retaining. If you look at the arrow though, over to the right, I did want to camp out a little bit on current district leases. You know, there there is some pushback. There was pushback in some areas that we would repurpose for a charter school. I I pulled up the lease cost yesterday and our charter school spent about 2.2 million a year. Rikka Schules is close to 740,000. Their lease runs out at the end of this year. You can look down and see family partnership. Their lease expires at the end of this year and theirs is is just under 300,000 per year. Act program leases and and of course, even leases for storage. So I think repurposing is a legitimate option to reduce expenditures while also creating efficiencies for district wide programs. And I I I feel that the board supports that, so we will certainly move in that direction. As you move down below, closing repurpose, we do renewals. We do renewals of roofs. We do renewals of buildings. If you look at Bartlett's multi-year, three-phase plan, it's very close to a renewal. It's it's really taking one of our oldest buildings and and making sure that it's ready for twenty second century education. And and as we, as most of us know, we have buildings that are kind of like Frankenstein. There's like modules that have been built at different periods over time. So sometimes you'll have something that's fifty years old and something else is twenty years old. So we also do partial renewals. And as you go down to replace, we certainly have done that. We've done that with or will do that with Inlevue and Ursa Major. We have several other schools on base that also qualify for that same DOJ grant. So it's certainly likely we would do that in the future. And when you look at replacing schools and people talk about why would we replace the school, it might be, as we've seen in other large districts, that we would actually close a couple of schools. Do you know those couple of schools? Build a brand new school that's modern, better. Again, focused on education level of service in the future. So we certainly don't want to take replacing schools off the off the table as a as an option. And then finally, we we certainly, you know, the board voted that we will retire Abbott Loop in about three years from now and which drives us to find a place for Alaska Native, of course. But you you could transfer to the MOA or find other uses. We've actually had a private school already reach out to me and ask if we would gift them with a building. And of course, that's not actually possible. We don't own the buildings. That's the muni. But it was really nice of them to keep us in mind and and be part of this journey that we're on.
I have some stuff I'd like to, member Jacobs and then member Higgins, and we actually will need a motion to extend.
A move to extend ten minutes? Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. If there's no objection, we will recess at five, ten. Member Higgins?
Yeah. Okay, so thank you, Mr. Chair. In the in the spirit of utilizing the maintenance mantra of when you open up the roof, take a look at everything. While we're talking about utilizing facilities that are available because of program consolidation, I hope we start considering, and I guess I for one will say I support the conversation as we're reducing operational expenses for charter programs, starting to talk about them needing to reserve some of their resources to help us make sure they have adequate transportation for all students. I think it's time to broach that conversation while we're talking about how we can assist our charter programs. They in turn, I feel like have an obligation to ensure that they can make sure their program is available to the entire community and not just those students that can have a method to a parent or otherwise to get to those programs. So I'm not sure if you want some point of formal motion or that should be part of the guidance, but I hope we can make that part of our framework. Thanks.
Member Higgins?
Oh, you pressed a button. Let me just say this. I don't believe the board did approve that we were going to level Abbott Loop when it came up. It was had only had five years with the city to be able to extend it. And we voted and said, well, let's take advantage of those five years. We gave it to Alaska Native Charter School, which I find it interesting. Every time we start this meeting, we the the regular meeting, we talk about this being native land and that's charted, that's Alaska Native Charter School. Then it became one million to two million to fix the roof. And then it became, but they want to change the road, which they don't care about. They that's something they would like, but they don't, they want the school. They want a continuity. Parents have it. I know you're going to hear from them next school board meeting. But I don't believe the school, this school board voted that we wanted that school eliminated. We've gotten to a lot of issues of discussions. I know there were limitations on how long we could do it without correcting the 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 issues with the city because of the roof. It's a couple of million dollars. We could add it to this line and take care of it. All the other issues are not a code requirements that would cause a problem to be school to be closed. We we all of our kids, every one of our kids, whether it's in our regular school, optional programs, a charter schools or ASD kids. And they need to be in a safer school. This school right now is working with the with the muni. They've got a park area associated with behind it with the they all came out there cleaning out weeds that didn't belong to have the right kind of trees and shrubs for the kids and they're really all engaged in it. And I don't believe at all, and I'm going to challenge you to go back and find where it is in there that the board voted that we wanted that school leveled. I know that's been on the list. We've gone through this over and over and over again, and I'm tired of it. It's going to come up to the board. It's going to be up, I'm sure, right now, next board meeting. I expect to have a bunch of people in here from Abbott Loop Community from Abbott Loop Charter School after this meeting are going to be here to talk about this. And I was going to raise it anyway to this line. If we add it now, a couple of million dollars, we save a school that we don't have a problem with leaking roofs. And and we have it for charter kids that don't that need it. So I'm I'm disappointed to hear that. I I I could be wrong. I'm going to ask you to find for me where the school board voted that we wanted that school to be leveled. It came up from from you in regards to the codes. And that issue came out, and I appreciate that. But that was because we wanted those kids in there, even if it was only good for five years. We have the ability to extend it. They've gone through all kind of frustrations on using the school for even community councils. They're being told no, then they're told yes, but then it gets blocked. I'm telling you, that school doesn't feel like it's being supported. Okay, at all. And I'm I'm disappointed. And I, it's a big issue to me right now. And I look forward to this discussion taking place, and I look forward to when they're coming in here to talk about saying, you know, a a large number of the native Alaska natives here are going to that school and they want it. And they're going to argue for it. And I don't want to say that the school's already voted when I don't believe it has. I'm going to challenge you to better show me where that board. that board voted, this board has voted to say that we wanted that school eliminated.
Thank you, member Higgins. Um, I appreciate your advocacy, and I think that some of the concerns you raised are coming from a very positive place, correct? I asked Mr. Anderson to put that on the record because I wanted the full school board to hear what I believe that I heard back in December when we had the guidance approved to move forward with closing Abbott Loop with the understanding that it would require quite a bit of capital investment. This was before we had had a school bond pass. Um, you know, we were coming out of a school bond failure, and we had to make some really difficult decisions. So it was my belief that we made the decision to what, do two things. Number one, um, recognize the fact that we need to close schools for a variety of reasons. But number two, we felt some urgency, right, to support ANCCS, because at the time, they were in a hallway in the middle of East High School, and we saw an opportunity to, at least for half a decade, I get, half a decade, give them the runway to be able to either raise funds for some other building or work with us for a right sizing plan that we told you would be coming. So again, I want to Mr. Anderson to raise that because I wanted this board to be aware that that's our understanding, because if we're mistaken, um, this would be a good time for your colleagues to to share if they share the same perspective, or if we need to go back and get some formal guidance on the record. Because I truly want to move forward, but I appreciate your remarks.
Member Bowley?
Thank you. I did what the superintendent said. I I don't, uh, I recall for me when I voted, and I can only remember my vote right now, but member Lessons is looking up the details. She's gonna have them soon, too. Um, we were looking to give students the depth and breadth of opportunities that they didn't have at Abbott Loop. So it wasn't the, this building structure itself was gonna cost a lot of money. I don't know that we could have, like, uh, demolished it, but this muni could have. And then the fire department decided to give five more years to uh, of of use. So I I think um I I think I'm hearing uh, member uh, Higgins, but I don't think we're talking about the same thing. I mean, I don't, and and I think what we can do is just go back and look at the record. The record won't lie. And uh, we can have that probably, it's short of doing that today here now. Um, you know, we were not going to, we we were not going to use that building, and we wanted kids to have more than what they had in that building. And that's why uh, that that's the recollection from from my perspective. Uh, so it was not, the building was not going to be repaired. We voted not to repair the building. Thank you.
Point of information? Yes, Mr. Chair, yeah, just for, just for clarity, um, the board and its budget guidance in December of twenty-twenty-two in a memorandum, um, one of the items as part of the budget guidance was to um, close Abbott Loop at the end of the uh, academic year. Um, the board then subsequently in April, it looks like, um, voted to allow ANCCS to utilize that facility for a set period of time. I don't have that memo in front of me. Uh, my internet connection was only so fast, but I believe it was for a period of five years. Um, so the board did take that action. This is the same group of seven, just for uh, information purposes. Not that the board can't discuss changing its mind, we can always do whatever we'd like, but for um, for the record, that's what we we took, and I think the vote was six to one. Thanks.
Member Higgins, and then we are gonna.
I'll go ahead and yield right now. We're out of time, and and this will come up again, I promise.
Um, I'm sorry to terminate in the middle of your presentation, but we do need to move to executive session, and this could be continued in another work session. Uh, with that, we are in recess. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I need to move that we enter adjourned to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and contracts.
Second.
That's probably a uh, more traditional way of doing it. Thank you. Without objection, we are in recess to executive session.